Good afternoon. I call to order the planning commission for Wednesday, November 5th, 2008. Anybody who will be speaking before the planning commission, please stand.
Okay.
Oh, never mind, you don't need. Hi, Joe Biden. And do you affirm that you will tell the truth today?
I do.
Thank you. We have no cases today before us. We do have a communication from John Valentor. Is that right? Valentor?
Right.
Okay. For a project at 46 North Lancaster Street. And why don't you come up and sit up here.
Yeah, that's nice that he does it up here.
Please stand.
There's some pictures.
Thank you. So this is a preliminary talk about your project. So it's just...
Paul indicated we're just going to hear us talk about it.
And talk about it, yeah, so that you get where any questions that we may have. And then when, that way, I think it makes the process a bit quicker and less convoluted when we do this sort of thing.
Okay. Do you want me to go ahead down?
Yeah.
First of all, this is obviously very preliminary. The property has not even been sold or anything. This is purely, at this point, just a fat gathering operation on my own part here to find out what will be capable of being done on this specific piece of land for a specific person. The prop, I think I gave you some photographs up there showing this is the Sudgeon-Dudz laundromat building. It is essentially, from street elevation, a one-story structure, but it has a full basement underneath it. Seventy-eight feet long by about 27 feet wide. And the building next door, you can see, is the all-tapped office/business building on there. And what I've submitted to the city for an application for a use permit, essentially, that's where this all started, because typically that's what I do, see if the uses are going to be acceptable at this site. It's a B1 zone, and it is surrounded, I drew that other little thing for you, to show by all three different R classifications in the city of Athens. And the intent here was, as you can see on the site plan, there's the capability I have laid out for, I think, 19 parking spots. And looking at that, we, looking at the development potential of that site as to residential and mixed-use commercial in this B1, which is permitted by code, I believe, I considered adding two stories to the existing one-story building and then also renovating the lower floor as residential or rental property, three apartments essentially, with the first floor, the street level, being commercial, remaining a laundromat. I believe that under the Title 41 now, Paul, that this project must be approved or reviewed by the planning commission, which is why I'm here today, just to see what you say. Now, some of the things that I've tried to do on here, and you can look at the photographs of the site and see that it's pretty much just bare concrete and not, you know, not a whole lot of attention has been taken on this property so far, up till now, to just making it fit into landscaping. And I've gone over this with the potential owner about the need, I think, to make the site a little bit more soft and attractive in terms of adding landscaping, not only on North Lancaster Street, but also on West Carpenter Street, which is that is the elevation that actually abuts the R1 part of the property. Across the street and all around, everywhere else, the project, R2 and R3, which is mostly student rental. But behind it, I think there are actual single-family dwellings, houses, people live in. And if you, as you can also see, I don't know if you probably know, the West Carpenter Street elevation of that building is the worst-looking elevation of them all, in terms of the way it's been kept up and maintained. And we just felt that this would be a good potential use for this particular site in trying to provide a better, still providing the B1 commercial activities, which are allowed by code on the site, but also incorporating some residential use as well.
Question.
Okay, so when you started the discussion, you're saying adding two stories with the idea that two stories would be apartments above.
Yes.
And the ground level of West Carpenter would be also residential or something different?
That's correct.
Okay, so really you have, you have a sandwich of residential, a business on, that's ground level with Lancaster, then two above.
That's correct.
And 19 spaces.
Nineteen spaces, yeah. Four bedrooms per floor, maximum is what I figure right now is 12. That would be five parking spots for the commercial, which I think, based on the area of the building at 2,000 square feet, meets, satisfies code requirements for that use.
You anticipate that these remain a laundromat then?
Yeah, right now. It would be commercial, because in that zone, I believe that that is requiring, that the first floor, whether it always remains a laundromat, I don't know, but at this point in time, as far as, I can tell, it's going to be commercial, the first floor.
And it's a, it's just a coin-operated laundromat?
Yes.
It's not a dry cleaner?
That's right.
It's just a coin?
Dry cleaners or anything, it's a coin laundromat.
I guess my concern is, I know park requirements are by square foot, but I look at it, I'm not trying to throw, you know, I guess my concern somewhere in the back of my head is the amount of parking spaces required for a laundromat.
For a laundromat?
Yeah. It's usually probably greater than most businesses, but I don't know that for sure. I don't count it. Not that that's a problem. I know there's a certain amount of foot traffic goes into that laundromat as well, so not everybody's driving.
It is in a residential neighborhood, right?
Yes. And I know that you were also in communication with Loeb about, Holov, about the quality of the soil or something like that, because it used to be a...
We've done tests, and I, Paul brought that to my attention. And I immediately contacted the potential buyer, and he said that they've already done due diligence in terms of soil testing on that priest property. And that was, I appreciated his bringing that to my attention, because I'd almost forgot that that used to be merit of the oil as well. And that has stopped a lot of projects all over town without having proper documentation of cleanup on that. Now, you know, it's one thing too, Paul, that you can see on the front of the building, where I put parking spots, almost parallel parking there, and actually, you can park more cars there, but I can't do it per the letter of the code.
I see.
In terms of front of the building. So there's availability, because that's, that's pretty much the configuration it is right now. And people actually park perpendicular to the property building in the line there. But because of the, it's not legal in terms of the parking spot area, I was not capable of showing that actually more cars could fit in that front of this laundromat than actually are indicated on my line.
And what's happening with the other little...
That's another piece of prop, that's not on...
Is that another piece of property?
Yeah, that's owned by others.
Okay.
There'll be no change in the curb cuts that are existing. I think that just trying to enhance that intersection with the trees. Now, some of these trees I have planted on the right-of-way, which, I'll have to make sure that's okay, instead of on the property. But as, I think, as accurate as I can on this drawing, I had not had a survey done specifically. I have just used the plat maps available and aerial photograph, photography available through the city's references to superimpose these building and the property lines on the site. So it's not an official survey at this point in time.
Right. So, well, I don't see the problem with right-of-way usage for trees, because that's already, already done. That, however, would be something that would have to be brought up with the tree commission, because part of the Title 41 process is you go before the tree commission.
I know.
Have you made an appointment with them yet?
I haven't done anything, except you, so far.
Okay.
I mean, I think that you're the key to making, I'm going to either go back and say yes or no, and let the owner decide whether or not the project was going to go through the next phase.
Right, right. Paul, you have any?
A couple things. And maybe I'm not seeing this right. Right now, they park in the front on the North Lancaster Street side?
Yeah.
On this design, you've put them all to the rear, is that correct?
I put the residential to the rear.
That's where the residential's, the commercial remains out front.
There's these little, these parallel, three parallel, under the trees.
Underneath the trees?
Yes.
Yeah. Right now, a lot of people park 45-degree angle in that area already.
And you have the two curb cuts on North Lancaster.
Those are the existing.
What's existing in the rear on West Carpenter?
It's just one, well, there's a, if you go to the, you look at the West Carpenter Street, the left side there, where I have a yellow color there, that is all sidewalk right now, even though it's in very poor condition. The rest of it is completely open to West Carpenter Street. There is no curb. It's just pull-in, and it's all in bad shape.
Yeah.
My, my concept is to actually have the entry over, just where it says West Carpenter Street on that drawing, I have that hatched area there. That would be the entrance, and there'd be a stairwell at that corner of the building going up. So I would take a tiny bit of the first floor and actually make it a communicating stair to get to the second and third floor. Also, from the first floor on that, that side elevation where there's those four parking spots, would also enter into that stairwell, which would get you up to the other two floors. The building would be fully sprinkled of fire protection, and we'd only have to have one primary staircase to get in and out of those.
So you're talking about an interior stairwell?
Yes.
And that would be on both sides or one side?
One side.
One side, and that would be the, oh, I see, okay.
I would take, and that's what I'm, I'm saying, I would take a little bit of that square footage for a vertical circulation inside of that existing first floor.
Okay. Yeah, I know. Another pole on the sidewalk.
Another pole right in the middle of our sidewalk.
Yeah.
It keeps people on their toes.
Did Nicholas get a chance to see those?
Yeah. Now, my concern is the, it's just rather, it's a very urban lot, and the problem with that building is it's so suburban, it's surrounded by a sea of parking. And it seems like, I understand there's a basement there that you want to try to use for use, but is there another way that you can cite the building that it has more of a presence than sort of being in the sea of, you know, parking stalls that, especially because Lancaster Street seems like, you know, you kind of come, it sort of really wraps around that lot, that it seems gives you a little more potential, and you might still be able to fit your parking needs in there, but not just, you know, maybe scare the parking to one side.
Now, the prime, well, one of the things that, from my past experience in dealing with the code, I, the building, the lot is a non-conforming lot.
Right.
And so if I tried to make the building footprint any larger, I would run into bulk control issues that would, you know, would prevent me from doing anything on this. I'm supposed to have a 40-foot rear yard setback, I believe, or no, 30. And I don't quite have that right now on that one corner of the building. So essentially, what I always try to do when I evaluate what capability or the, what can happen on a piece of property, is I try to avoid going before the zoning board of appeals. And at this point, I think I can do that without, if I, if I don't change the footprint of the existing building.
But it will be taller.
Taller, but not in a different location on the site. I mean, that would, that's what would be fine, tear it down and start a whole new, try to come up with a whole new concept, but...
Right. Well, on reuse of a building, I personally, from my, my point of view, is much better for a sustainable use.
Yeah, but are you going to be able to reuse this building? I mean, you don't have to, you're going to have to not tear it down and just build a footprint or...
No, I will, what I'm going to do, and I've done this numerous times, is I'll build a new building inside this one.
Okay.
I will have a complete new structural system.
Right.
Which will carry the floor, I mean, it'll be completely independent of the structure of this existing facility here.
Right now, it's all cinder block?
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, we would, all of the exterior would be obviously redone. It would not look like the same building when we're done with it. There'd probably be, well, with the two stories, I would still try to keep the profile as low as I could because of the nature of the neighborhood, even though Patrick Rose and company down the road a little, we're almost down to, farther down North Lancaster, where there's some R, larger apartment structures. But for the most part, this is a transition between the bigger buildings and the littler buildings. And I'm sure that we would have an articulated building with porches and balconies at some, so it wouldn't be, not, just try to make it blend in as much as possible. It's quite possible that the second floor is actually built in the roof structure itself with dormers and gables, rather than having a full story and then a roof on top, just to try to keep the profile again as low as I could and to fit in with that neighborhood. Again, it's only one apartment per floor, so it's not like...
Right. Trying to stick in its own...
That size, it should be okay, and I think I can do, I can do that.
Now, when we're looking at total height, where does that come from, from this point or from that point?
Good question. We basically have bulk controls in place here, it's in your packet, I think. The zone is B1.
Three and a half stories.
Three and a half stories, yeah.
So you're calling the...
Basement.
Basement. Is that a half-story?
No.
Okay.
That basement doesn't count as a story.
Does that basement count?
No.
Okay, so it's three stories from Lancaster. Okay. So, okay.
And the address is Lancaster and Carpenter.
Okay.
And technically, I think it always goes to the larger of these streets, I remember.
Okay. So it's with, it doesn't have any height problems, how many is, so, okay. Any other questions? I think one thing that I always, one of my favorite things is infill, and I really like infilling. You know, we've talked a lot about that, a lot, so I'm always encouraged when people, you know, build up density, you know, in this sort of thing. And I'm also encouraged, because several times we've had people come with ideas for similar-sized, little bigger lots, but having, you know, so many apartments that it just, you know, then it runs into just too much density. And so I think that personally, from this right here, I see a really nice balance between the commercial and the, for myself, and looking at how many apartments are there. So I, I'm, I think that that is, I commend you for that. I think that's great. I also like the idea when you start looking at surrounding uses, the fact that, to kind of replicate some of the architectural details from the other houses, and I know a lot of those places have gables and stuff, and so, I know you're in David's work, so I have no worries about that. So, the process with this is, I would encourage you to get on the docket of the other commissions, specifically the tree commission. They seem to always be the ones who get filled up the quickest.
Mr. Valentor is on the Shea Tree Commission, so Jennifer, next week for a different project, so I will send them an email.
Okay.
And see if you can be added to discuss this, there should be no reason why we're talking about it.
Paul, if you're going to talk with me, I put you on one of these tables here.
Yeah, come join us. Do you have any comments about the project?
I don't specifically at this point. From a planning perspective, I suppose I agree with you about it being infill. It appears to meet bulk controls well, and for a non-conforming site, I think it's an improvement to what we already have up there. That's my two cents on it. And we, the tree commission will get them on the agenda with them. See, the reason we didn't proceed that far forward at this point is because there's a real estate transaction that has to go through.
Right.
Between the current owner of the site and the person, somebody wants to buy it and do the redevelopment. So I didn't think it was wise for us to sign a case to this when we still have a real estate transaction to go through Title yet.
And then there's the, you probably won't have to go through the board of zoning appeals?
Well, I do not plan on it. I would actually, you want to, I mean, if I can get, and I, I don't know exactly what I'm looking for from you guys, it's just like a nod that says, okay, maybe everything will be okay. And before I invest, or I advise the owner to go ahead with this, we've got to have some kind of, making sure that this basic extent of the project or the concept is going to be accepted.
Well, for me personally, I think the concept is within, you know, the comprehensive plan talks about infill, and I, I agree with Paul about, you know, upgrading this area and making it a lot more visually and aesthetically pleasing.
It's a very dominant intersection.
Yes, it is.
Coming in from Columbus Road.
Right.
And in my opinion, it needs, it gives you some work.
Yeah.
To tend it to exist, perhaps.
Yeah. As long as, you know, going through the checklist, have you given them the checklist?
Yeah.
You know, and I don't foresee any major hurdles at this point from a conceptual point of view. Paula, Paul, do you have any?
It really looks like the only thing could be the tree commission and the disability commission, because if you exempt from the others, there's no variances or needed.
Question, I guess, I like the idea, I think it's a good one, actually. I guess I just wonder where the, I look at the tree islands you're putting in there, this, these, according to sketch or the map that you're presenting, these are actually no more than what's in the city right-of-way right now in terms of the curves and the present curb cuts.
No.
Okay, so we're not, I guess...
I'm not leaving the street anywhere.
Yeah, that's, that's my concern, all of a sudden, the street pulls out a little bit.
These curb cuts, and I did try to make them as accurate as I could.
Okay.
With the information I have.
Okay. I think it's a good idea, it looks good. And again, I know the parking is variable there with the laundromat.
You know, the one thing too, you don't realize is, some of those lines are actually retaining walls.
Oh, yes, yes.
There's levels here.
That's elevations.
There's like an existing retaining wall over here, and we're proposing a new one over here to access the lower-level apartments. There's different grades here, it's not like, it's not all the...
I'm aware of it, I walk by there quite a bit.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea, and I think, I just need to, you know, check off the things that need to be done on the checklist.
I think, you know, I think primarily getting you guys to, for comfortable is the biggest step to find out.
Do you have any other questions?
No, no, I don't, I mean, I think the curb, the curb cuts that are on site are pretty extensive. If anything, I think it could create sort of confusion still at that size with how the parking is.
You know, it's...
It's designed right now, especially on the West Carpenter Street, I mean, you're basically backing out into the street when you leave the parking stall, which seems like...
Yeah, that I'm not as worried about. I think that we, if anything, going over with the code and planning to reduce these curb cuts would be a better idea.
Yeah, I think so.
This, this one here is extremely dangerous, because it's right at the light with a three-way, people aren't stopping when they go, I mean, it's not, it's not a very good intersection. If you're coming off of, I don't know what road it is, in the middle school, or trying to go straight or something.
That's Lancaster.
There's an awful lot of confusion as to who's got right-of-ways and traffic, and this, this large access point or curb cut does not help the situation at all. I mean, it could, it could be removed or even much, and I think that's something that could be worked with, with the city planning and stuff, in terms of coming up with maybe a better way to make that intersection more safe.
Yeah, because I don't know if you necessarily need two-way traffic through the parking lot, if, you know, it might be, just an enter and exit sort of, yeah.
If that's the case, see, I could actually provide even more of a barrier, I mean, a visual barrier, or at least a softening of the asphalt.
Yeah, because I think if you're not going to be able to, if you're sort of steadfast with keeping the existing curb cuts, you're trying to avoid having to go through a sort of zoning appeal, that, you know, that you said, if there's a way to sort of soften it with more landscaping, more sort of pedestrian spaces along Lancaster Street, and not so much auto-oriented, you know, you might be able to accomplish this.
Something that certainly can, we need more of that, too.
In terms of Carpenter, Carpenter does, it's technically to cut through there.
Yeah.
But it's not a high-traffic area, in terms of backing out there. I'm aware, I, as I say, I go through that area and walk through there quite a bit.
Any other questions, Paul?
Just as soon as you do have plans with you to have a copy, I'd like to send them out to our service utility department.
Well, this'll be...
But I'd be glad to hear that it's sprinkled and...
The owner has to commit himself now to going through, actually doing the job.
Uh-huh.
That'll be the next step.
Great. So do you have any questions or, anymore?
No.
Okay, great. And you got all your answers that you need?
Yes, I did.
Great, thank you. It looks exciting.
Do you want your pictures back, or is...
I can have them.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay. Great. Next on our agenda is a report from city planner. Right, Paul? Doesn't it back down?
I created two things here. These are blow charts for how Title 41, and on the back of the side is the UVA, with how it actually works administratively. There's been a city council, two weeks ago, I believe, or three weeks ago, there was a, the planning, planning committee recommended that to Jennifer Simon, that she, from the Athens Chamber, that she get in contact with some of her people to come back and give their recommendations or their problems with Title 41, now that's been going through for the last year. And I met with them this morning, their government affairs committee, and it was brought up again, and I wanted to, I thought the planning commission should, it's useful to look at it through what actually happens rather than what the code says we do, so we can actually visualize and see what the process is. So if we're going to be reviewing this for council, that if the planning commission has any recommendations with how it works, or things that should be fixed on it that we can discuss that as well, for, since the service safety director is a key person and on the planning commission as well as with, in these processes, that she be aware of, where she has to jump in and our timelines with everything, so.
I see where you put the 15 days starts when the application is complete, or just below that, below that, I see.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
15 business days after, say, the safety director determines that the application is complete.
The wellhead protection permit was supposed to be the first permit, and so I don't see that these are listed in an order or anything like, separate from, here's the, here's my plan, and this is what I want to do.
Okay. You mean, as far as everybody reviewing it, streets, water, wellhead, et cetera? That wellhead should be the first to review it?
It has to be separate, let's see.
Okay.
You want it before...
It really should almost be way up here with the commissions or something like that, wellhead protection review. I'll check with them, we're in, have a meeting with a team, so.
Okay. You're saying that wellhead should review it before you determine it's complete?
Between which box?
When it says that the application's complete, that means all the documentation that the developer is required to provide, all of their documents, their blueprints, their maps, et cetera, and then we spread it out to all the Shea Tree Commission, the street departments, fire, safety, wellhead, I think would fall in there as well.
I just don't know if 15...
Under the ordinance.
Right, I don't know if 15 business days works for the wellhead protection team.
Okay.
Because of the, depends upon what they're building, you know, when you have a major, major structure with a lot of chemicals and what have you, and MSDS sheets, so I'll get that clarified.
Do you have any question?
Yeah, why, why is wellhead different than any of the other ones?
We've gotten, I guess, in the past, they tell me, we've gotten pretty far down the road with a project, and then wellhead protection is brought in, and it's more to do with the timing.
Right.
All the information that they have to do, when you have, like, some of our most recent healthcare facilities have tons of the MSDS data sheets that they have to get in and whatever, and so it's a timing.
So, what was the feed, did Jennifer have feedback about this process?
Not at this point. They had some concerns about the appeal process, I believe, where it states that if the planning commission were to deny a Title 41 application, then to appeal that, you go back to the planning commission, and that there's no, there's no intermediary, and then if it's denied again, your next, the only way you can resolve it, if you want to... Your next, the only way you can resolve it, if you want to push forward, is to go through through the courts.
Mm-hmm.
So.
There's been no appeal, though.
There has not been, yeah.
I can see the concern about that.
Yeah.
It's kind of circular.
But it seems like if you're, I don't know how you would appeal it, or who we would appeal it to at this level unless it was to council.
But in theory, okay, let's let's play out why we would deny something like this. It either doesn't fit our code, or we decide it's not in the best interest of the comprehensive plan. So they could come back at us with a modification. They could come to, in theory, go to the zoning board of appeals for some of the something that doesn't fit code, at least in a Title 23. Rightaway issues, we go to council. So in terms of our appeal, the rejection out, I'm trying to think why we to reject it outright would imply that it doesn't fit something in our code in general or right up, that they can't even change at this point.
Okay.
Or they're not willing to change. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
So when you say, you know, they want to appeal it, I mean, to say, let's go to the court of appeals and just win a case and build a building in regards to what we want.
Well, also, appeal, I mean, at some point, the process should be a give and take enough to where those issues are answered ahead of time, but there may be a time where it needs to be, that the plan itself needs to be denied because for the reasons you're talking about, but that then gives them the chance to go to do some other things because of, you know, like, if you deny it, then you can go and go to the zoning board, because that's usually how some of the other processes work, you get denied first and then you go to the board. So, I mean, that, yeah, maybe that needs to be flushed out a bit more.
Probably if you're going to make a flow chart coming out of the denial point, trying to see where it is in here.
Bottom right corner.
Okay, if it declines the plan, developer, you may appeal a PC later. We would probably state reasons for this amount, therefore it'd fall into certain parts of the code, assuming that that's, and at that point, depending what part of the code it may actually, you know, go, again, rightaway issue, council, zoning, Title 23, zoning board of appeals. Housing issues, there is a housing board of appeals. I don't think it's been it's met in years. In fact, I don't even know if it's got a full a full board right now. So you could see where there's avenues of appeals, at least in three of those aspects right there, where there's Title, what is it, 29, 31, the housing rates, 23 zoning, and rightaway, of course, would be, again, by default, goes to council. After that, then what other problems will be, we anticipate happen here? You know, is it because they didn't build it according to the fire requirements? Would we actually want them to take that to court and win? The assumption is they come back with it, retooled or recrafted to something more acceptable, and we've given guidance on that. We've given them what we just did now.
Hopefully, we'd never even get to that point.
Yeah.
I mean, appeal in this, how you're describing it, just says that we've given input, these are the problems, and they have just refused to.
To do it.
To do it. And they've gone through and they just, and then that case, yeah, that would be the worst-case scenario for denial.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking, right? So I don't know where the, you know, how much more we have to create an appeal process for that.
But maybe you can kind of bring our discussion to Jennifer and such. I would hope that this process would be give and take enough to where we would never get to that point.
I don't think, at this point, they didn't have, there wasn't much concern because there hadn't been enough, there's there's only one project that's gone from start to finish through it, nothing, and that's it. We have, and then we have Glenn Knudsen's property on Columbus Road, which is in process right now. So we don't have enough to really see what's working on it, what's not working.
Right.
Is is where their position on it right now.
See, I wonder if appeal is just too harsh of a word, because it's not like they're really appealing. Hopefully, we're giving them feedback and they're amending or correcting or something like that. It's not like appeal just sounds like they're going to come back with the same thing to the commission, and we're just going to send this loop. So I, I mean, to me, it's just a verbiage if we can say, you know, amend or.
Yeah, yeah.
You know.
I don't know if this is in here for legal reasons.
Because obviously, if, I mean, if if all these other commissions have already said application's complete, this is what we've got, it's not like it needs to go back to them, that that's not missing. It's some other, it's a code issue or, you know, Title 21 or, you know, 23 or one of those. So, you know, to me, it's like we want to see some sort of, you know, writing of the ways if they want to keep the project going. And then I don't know, do they, if they want to stick with the same thing, there's there's just really no point in like coming back to the commission.
Yeah, yeah.
So I guess they could know what happens.
And actually, if you think about it, if there is something missing from, you know, you look at the checklist we have here.
Right.
If they're not filling this checklist adequately for some of the some of the other components in here, I mean, if they're if they're not going to be giving us, you know, I doubt we need for this particular one, we just saw a traffic input pack study.
Right.
But if somebody's saying, you know, you did not give me what I need here, it's inadequate to fire study.
Right.
You know, egress or ingress, it's going to stop before.
Exactly, it shouldn't even cut to, so.
Yeah, you're right. Okay, so amendment may be a better word.
Because, I mean, that's the, I think the sort of thing that we're trying to do now is make sure people come in, come in first, we'll do communications, make sure we can give you some positive or negative feedback either way, and then that way, you know, that's only going to help prepare them when they really go forward with the full application.
Yeah, I'm I'm wondering if part of this review, since there has been so few processes finished, it's a little premature, and we need to wait, you know, and instead of having a calendar time to review it, saying, you know, maybe after two more projects are completed or something, that would just make more sense, you know? Because, I mean, I know that the first the first process, she was interviewed by the newspaper, and she said, oh, it was great, very friendly and customer satisfaction, which is what we like to hear. But, you know, so that might be something that you can take to Jennifer, too.
Well, I'm sorry, again, I'd still, I mean, there's, to me, there's nothing wrong with setting milestones for the 15 days. They're not, and again, they can say, they're only looking to say it's complete.
Right.
So there's more documentation needed for them to make their decision. They just have to say that within 15 days that.
Right.
This is incomplete.
I think what the discussion here is that the intention was that Title 41 got a yearly review.
Yeah.
And we only had one case in one year, et cetera, so it's a little bit premature.
So it's a little premature.
I think it is, but I think you still have to kind of, you know.
Well, I mean, I think that interviewing the the first person, you know, what would you approve might be a, you know, was it, I mean, we didn't have the checklist with that one. I mean, that's something that came out of that process is the checklist and stuff. So, I mean, it's been going under constant review internally. I mean, you need checklists and flow charts and stuff, so. Input's always good. You know, communication input's always good.
If if there's an issue with, like, if the if wellhead protection review may take longer than 15 days, and that's something that we need to make sure that we have written in there, because requirement is that everything must be reviewed within 15 days of the service safety director saying that the application's complete. And and from that point, then we have to, at the end of that 15 days, then we move it back to the planning commission. And so I don't know if if we need to put a clause in there saying that the wellhead protection may not, may preliminary reviews must be within 15 days, but the final determination may come based upon different requirements or something like that, specifically for wellhead, if that's a that's a concern.
Yeah, and that's a, that's just, that won't even apply, that won't really apply in certain areas, too. So so you're going to check into that?
Yes.
Okay, and get back to Paul.
I'll report.
Okay. So, anything else to?
Thanks for doing it, Paul.
Yeah.
I see you also have Title 21 on the back in P U D. Do you want to talk about that, or is that to you something different?
I didn't have much to discuss on it other than I, since this also goes through the planning commission, and there are requirements with when when and what we're reviewing and at what times, so it's just relevant to make sure that we we're all aware of our the role of the planning commission on this.
Okay. Okay. Any more questions? Anything else to report?
That's all I have.
Great, thank you.
Thanks.
Anything from you guys?
I heard back from some of the neighborhood associations about your walks. I was, they were really pleased.
Well, the east side was the east intended out of them all, so.
I know. The east side had a hard time, and I think part of that was the change of date and such, and so maybe in the spring.
Well, I'd be happy to do a second one at that time.
Yeah, yeah, so.
We're trying to organize one with the north side.
Okay, great. But I know the west side was really, really pleased, and I heard a lot of really good feedback about that, so, thank you. More communication, the better. That's great. Great, thank you. Next on the agenda is the opportunity for citizens to speak. Announcements and other business. The next meeting is November 15, 2008, at 12 o'clock. What happened to the?
I think that day.
That takes a Saturday.
No, the hearing's on the 19th.
Saturday?
Which is the same as the planning commission.
This should be the 19th.
That should be the 19th.
And we have a public hearing.
At 11 o'clock.
A public hearing for, I believe it's at noon.
Is this the site, this, we're not doing a site review?
We, the site review was has been completed.
Yeah.
I didn't get that. It was the day that.
You weren't here.
It was, it was the day most people were actually invited with.
Joe Biden.
Joe Biden.
We, because you were at Joe.
I was out of town.
Harry, I.
Nicholas.
You were there.
Yeah.
Okay.
Never there.
Well, it's just, I mean, I've gone by and walked around the area, so.
We could always rearrange arrange another one.
No, I feel pretty comfortable.
So they'll be on also is after the public hearing, the diversified properties. That's a public name.
Okay, good.
So 12 o'clock.
The public hearing will be at noon. It's how we have it.